Okay, we should be good to go, Mr. Mayor.
All right, it is 7:03. We're gonna start our Thursday, April 1st work session. Let's start off, call to order, then pledge allegiance. Can I have, who is not, Stacy, can you start, lead the way for the pledge of allegiance?
I've never done that in 20 some years.
But guess what? You are tonight because your speaker and your computer sounds great tonight, so let's not push it.
I rearranged, so it's closer to me. Perfect. I pledge allegiance.
Thank you so much, thank you so much. So, we're gonna open up the public comments, but also, just wanted, last Thursday, the budget was emailed out and also provided on board docs, so y'all have had 168 hours a week to, you know, review it, you know, reach out to Joanne or myself. Today's April 1st, this is our first budget meeting about the, tonight, we're discussing the general fund. Our goal is to answer any questions you might have. Also, we will write notes down if we gotta get back to you. And then what I would highly recommend is after this meeting, you know, review it some more, get questions into Joe or myself, and we'll definitely get it to you. I think looking at the budget, you'll see the FY 2021, the actuals and proposed, and I think our town did an amazing job getting through COVID. Very strong, so I'm excited about the FY 22 budget. We have a lot of new things we're adding, and I think we got a lot of good direction, we got a lot of good stuff. Hopefully, coming out of Annapolis, I think the session ends on the 12th. So, you know, hopefully by the 12th, I'll be passing on some great news to everybody here. So, let's go ahead and open up for public comments. The town of North Beach welcomes public comment. Please place your comment in the chat box. Please state your name and address. We'll wait with a couple minutes, and obviously, as we go through, if somebody else has a question, they can always throw it in the chat box. Well, I'm looking, I see there's Dick, and that's it. And, well, Lisa. This people has, all right. All right, let's go ahead and we'll close the public comment, and if somebody does pop in or late or something, they can always shoot over a message if we have to. So, what Joe has provided was, was the actual budget. It's getting broken down. We're focusing on the general fund tonight, focusing on the general fund tonight, unless Joe says differently. And then, sheet attached to each item, well, not each item, but a lot of items have a note section that goes a little bit more deeper explanation. I'm gonna go ahead and turn the meeting over to Joe. You know, we'll go through the highlights, but if you have any questions, please let us know. I don't think we need to go every item to item, but again, this is Joe, so Joe, take it over. Thank you.
I appreciate y'all being with me tonight. Again, we're gonna focus on the general fund FY 2020 budget, and we have several meetings to discuss the each item further as we progress through the next couple of months. But in the general fund, there's some specific areas I need you to pay attention to. The first one is the tax rate. Our current tax rate is the .6170, and our constant yield rate is .6034. And I'm recommending that we go with the constant yield rate. There's no reason why we would need to do it any differently. And you can see based on that number, this is the projected revenue, the 1.6 million over here. Now, the next, so that would require, if you go with the constant yield, there's no public caring or anything, because you're not increasing the taxes, you're lowering the taxes. The second item on our list is the refuse fee, and that fee is gonna be going up. Right now, it's posed at $414 per household per year. That's an annual fee, and that's based on the increase from the vendor and to cover costs for dumpsters and community cleanups. We have two of those. And the mayor will get in further details about those in our next meeting, because we're gonna discuss at the next week's meeting all the fees that are gonna be involved with the budget for you to pass with more detail. So, I'll be sending that out probably Monday of next week with details. So, that's what that fee is, and I just wanted you to be aware that the budget is proposed based on that $414. The local income tax revenue is basically gonna be the same as it was in past year, and I feel comfortable leaving at that conservative number. Really no significant changes there. We haven't been negatively impacted by COVID for that, and that's a miracle in itself, so I'm pleased with that number. How about user? You have that number. We actually knew that number around October, and again, that's, that number is relatively the same as last year's, pretty close, not too much, not, nothing to write home about. It's only like $5,000 difference, so. But still, it's consistent revenue that we can depend on, and I don't feel like there'll be any surprises there. The other things that we've had to deal with, and everyone is aware, COVID and the waterfront and not opening the waterfront was a dramatic impact on our FY 21 budget, and we've made some changes in there, and that's in the proposed budget column, which we'll discuss further as we get through this process. But you can see there are reductions because the revenue didn't, wasn't achieved, the expenses had to come down, and the mayor was very proactive in that, so that's a blessing. But you'll see this year with the beach fees, I did a projection for the waterfront based on ticket sales, which will be the new method that the mayor will be introducing to you. And again, that's something we're gonna do in the next meeting with the details, because they need their own discussion platforms. They don't need to be intermingled with everything else. You need to understand with our process, what we're proposing for those beach fees.
Question.
Yes.
Are the gaming revenues gonna remain the same? Do we know?
The gaming revenues, we've done fairly well. You know, we reduced that last year because we thought it may be impacted. And we're on key, we haven't received our third quarter payment by 21, but I don't know about you, I've not seen a decline over at the gaming, so I can't guarantee you, but my instincts tell me, and I've heard nothing to differ, that we should be in line with what we projected to achieve. And again, as soon as I get that third quarter, I'll let you know what it is, and you'll be able to tell. It will be right in schedule.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Again, I don't wanna go through every, every single line. One of the other items impacted by the revenue under the waterfront is we've removed our agreement with GWK, is it GWK? I think it was, that was doing the lease or rentals for the waterfront, for the kayak, and whatnot, and we found a method that we can, we can achieve that 100% of revenue to the town of North Beach. And we'll talk about that too when we get into the beach fees and what the fees are gonna be set at. But just let you know, that's a change for improvement for our collection of revenue on the front.
Joanne, just real quick, so are you saying that we're not gonna have those items anymore, or we're just gonna be doing it differently?
We're gonna have, we're starting off with tube rentals. We'll have the tube rentals, the chair rentals, and the umbrellas. We will not have the kayaks and the double kayaks and the bicycles, and the revenue really, it's not there for the the results, you don't gain the results from having, you didn't have a whole lot of rentals on those, and they take up room and require staff. So, we weren't really making the revenue that we needed for those items. But we definitely will continue with the tube rentals, because that's a very lucrative item. Thanks. Question, Gwen?
It does, thank you. Well, I'm, and I'm curious, how do we know that the tubes are going to be so successful? I'm just, I'm just curious to.
Based on prior years, because we, they were doing tube rentals down there anyway, and they, they're in high demand.
Okay.
They are, and we have documentation to prove it.
Awesome. All right, thank you.
Okay, you're welcome. I know you'd like data.
Yes, I do.
Okay, I'll make sure you get some. We, we included a 1% coal for all employees, all permanent employees. The county, I think, when we talked to the county, and Mary, you can correct me if I'm wrong, I think they're doing .84 is what's proposed, and theirs, less than 1%.
But, yes, that's what we were told. So, again, we haven't seen it in writing yet, but when I had a meeting with them recently in town, that's what they told me. One of the commissioners and the town administrator passed on. Now, maybe as they negotiate and go through it, it might change, but that's what we're expecting.
Yeah. And mostly, I had a little side session with Jane, and most of you know that, if you hover over that cell on the spreadsheet, it'll give you some more detail too about that item, just as you're moving forward and looking through items. We continued with our contributions to the fire department, and we're still under that five-year contribution for Calvert Memorial Hospital, 5,000 annually, and there's a $2,500 fee for miscellaneous donations. The one item that did increase is number 21, which I apologize, I skipped over it a little bit, is printing and binding. Printing and binding, it shows an increase of $7,000 to pay for the printing, stuffing, and mailing of four quarters of water and sewer bills. So, that's what the increase is there. We can keep going. No real changes, it's just detail. I wanted you to understand what it was that we were working with, but no real big changes. Of course, you're probably already familiar with the ground rent parking that we pay Russo for, for the hospital center. We get reimbursed 100% of that through Calvert Memorial Hospital with that parking agreement, so that's a plus. And then so many events, you'll see that we have them on the books, but they're tentative, and all plans are subject to change based on whatever occurs with COVID and whatever governor's regulations are for openings and outdoor visits and things. That'll decision will be made, I guess, as they come upon each event, so you have to keep abreast of what's current and what's not current. Weddings were removed, there's no permits issued for weddings planned for FY 22. It's been scaled down. No real big items as far as purchases. There's a new clicker ticket program for the waterfront, which that's part of what we'll get into next week with the fees that we're gonna lay out for you. And then Public Works is the one that has biggest impact with some equipment that need to be purchased to achieve the goals down at the Public Works Yard for leaf composting and those type of things, but the detail is also included.
Are we doing leaf composting down there?
Yeah, I started two years ago, and what we did was, it's not open to the public yet, we haven't worked it out yet. What we do is, so we used to take the leaves from the streets that DPW used to pick up and throw them in a dumpster, and the dumpster would go to landfill. So, two, when I got elected, I went ahead and built a enclosed area down there, so what they do is they dump it off there. DPW would turn the leaves over, and then Chesapeake Bounty and some, another farm, our farm will come down and get it. Our ultimate goal is that we'll get the residents involved, but we're not ready for that yet.
I just wondered where that was in that process, because I knew Chesapeake's bounty was interested in some of that.
Yeah, they now get it, but we haven't opened it up. We still have to figure out the logistics and get homeowners involved, because when you get homeowners involved, it changes everything. So, our ultimate goal is that the leaves that we're throwing in bags, that the homeowners will put them in paper bags and/or take them over to landfill, dump them, and then we can, you know, we can collect more leaves and debris like that. That's the goal, but COVID slowed us up a little bit, but I think this year we'll get a little closer. If you look in here, you'll see we have in here that we want a new leaf back. The one we have is, it doesn't get down and really get our storm drains cleaned well enough.
We almost got rid of all of them, Jane, real quick. We almost got rid of all of them with Chesapeake Bounty, and it was another farm, Tuxton Overlook Farm, I think, that got a few.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah, there's, that's, that's the only big, real big items that we have. Other than the resident deputy service, which is note number 47 on your notes, that budget has increased to $550,000. And.
We have to pay all that?
Well, yes, you do, if you're gonna have the deputy chairs.
So, I could tell you that I had a meeting with, with Major McDowell last week. I've met with our lieutenant pretty much every day for the last, I don't know, a couple of weeks, and I've expressed our concern with the dollar amount. I've expressed our concern about some, what we really need to see happen. And I really feel that you're gonna see Lieutenant Hollinger really step up with a lot of stuff. They, we also have some ideas that, like Joe and I had a conversation, I don't know, about a month or so ago, and there's some good ideas that just have not been vetted out yet. But our goal is to improve our cost of deputies. It may not happen this budget, but our goal is by the next budget that we'll have the, and I think you'll like it, but I got it, we gotta vet it out first. You gotta remember, this has been this way for forever. We're slowly switching contracts and improving them for the town on a, you know, monthly basis. This is gonna take a little bit longer, but they know, they know my concern, they know your concern, because most, I've talked to a lot of you, and I've heard you loud and clear. Calvert, Chesapeake Beach knows where we stand. They just brought on another deputy over there. Their expense is a little over a million, I think it's 1.2 million that they're spending. And that's not counting all the private ones that are within the gambling establishments. That doesn't have anything to do with that, so. We're getting there. We're getting it, trust me. I look at every nickel, and staff can tell you, I look at every nickel to get the best improvements. This one is just gonna take a little bit longer. You just have to trust me on that. I, trust me, I, it did go up, and Joe and I both, our eyes got big, and we did meet with them. I actually did one on South Carolina with my father-in-law situation, so we will keep in the loop as we are able to explain and do more with it. But I think if we can get our new plan in place, you're, we're gonna come out better.
Yeah, it's definitely, if it's successful, it will be a benefit to the town of North Beach and to the Chesapeake Beach.
And to Chesapeake Beach, and to Calvert County.
Yeah, I think I'll include it. It would be a win-win. It'd be even instead of two sides.
When do, when do you guys, when do you think you might share those, be ready to share some of those ideas?
Well, so, I kind of passed it on to some of the commissioners already. I mean, we could do it in, because it's about a contract, we could definitely do it in an executive session, because it's a contract. I wouldn't, I would not have a problem with doing an executive session because of a contract, so we can, we can set that up, you know.
Yeah, I think he can talk to you in an executive meeting.
Maybe we can.
It could only be effective probably next budget cycle.
But it's a complete reversal of what we're doing now.
Yeah, I just thought even if we have to wait, but yeah.
Yeah, we could do it. We can do an executive session, because it's contract negotiation.
Yeah.
Gwen, I just wanted to point out that Lisa put a, has a comment in the chat about a, one of the items. I didn't know if you, if you saw that.
No, I can't see it. I'm looking at my screen as I go.
All right, Lisa asked what will happen. So, here's what, here's, here's, we're not gonna go deep about the fees. The company came and got them all last weekend. They got the paddleboard and the kayaks, and we're talking five total, which opened up space for residents to sort our kayaks down there, which we already allow now. There's kayaks being stored down on the beach now. It opens up more space. But yeah, that's, they came back and got their stuff. Bikes were never used. They were just stored in one of our buildings. We put them out, but they were never used, so I think you're gonna like the numbers with the new inner tubes and stuff like that, once you get to see it.
Yeah.
I like Lisa's idea, though, what she asked, what she, and maybe that's just something for a different conversation. She said I'd wanted to lead some kayak trips for the town when allowed, but.
You can.
Yeah.
We don't wanna, and most people have their own kayaks and stuff, and that's, I mean, it's just, you know.
Instead of bring your own beer, bring your own kayak.
Yeah.
I think that'll work perfectly, Lisa. Okay, so, we have, we talked about, a little bit about the equipment for the public works, you know. It's been a little while since we bought some major equipment down here, so this is kind of a blessing. I think I've covered most of the highlights of the budget, and you have your notes. But the one thing I cannot let you leave off the budget without letting you see the debt service on 54. And you'll see that there's quite a bit of general fund debt service that's gonna be paid off here in the next few years. I mean, the closest one is what, January of 24, that'll be paid off, and that's 89,000 a year. That's a road. Complete. And then in 2025, that's 227,000 annually. That's two roads you can complete a year. So, I'm real excited about the debt service coming down. We're self-funding now, I think is working perfectly for us. Nothing, no catastrophes happen. I think we're working out well. So, I think we've hit on all the highlights. You know, I'm a little, I know I'm going through it rather quickly, but I'm here for anyone who has any questions. If you need something, say something, because what I like to do is if you have a question, your other council members might be thinking the same thing and just haven't asked it yet. So, I'll send the response out to everybody.
Oh, good, Joanne. I was, that's what I was gonna suggest is, when you get questions from other people, okay, that'd be great, if you could share.
Yeah, I do that all the time, yes.
Fabulous.
Yep, no sense holding it in. I like to let it out. Well, that's my, that's my spiel for the general fund, and what I'm most excited about is next week's meeting where we discuss the fees.
So, as you go through this budget, we're gonna go, the feed discussions, it's gonna be rather lengthy, because we do need to adjust. Minimum wage went to 1175. There's, I'm gonna give you an update on the beach, what our goals are for the beach, to click tickets. A lot of things that we improved on, even, you know, our payroll now is electronic, it's online. I mean, we've made, we've made a lot of changes, a lot of improvements for efficiency. But also, what you're gonna find is that our new layout, and this is a new layout of the beach, is gonna be very beneficial for our residents. My goal since day one is making sure that we're bringing value to our residents, and I think what you're gonna see is with the two changes, residents are gonna benefit. The library is still on track to start sometime September, October. I think when we start digging deep about the fees next week, and when you be prepared to understand that, I'll update you on what our neighboring town is doing with their fees, and I'll update you on what Calvert County is doing with their fees. And what we're doing makes sense, and it's gonna be needed, and if you get a chance, let me know, hit me up. I love to take you on a little walkthrough of what all the changes button, and we've made down at the Welcome Center, and also about the inner tubes, and same thing with DPW, we've made a lot of changes over there. I mean, so, I think we're, we're, we're doing a lot of good things. We still have some challenges we gotta get through. But go dive through here. You have any questions at all, and we can, you know, we'll get it back to you.
Also, before, before I leave you all tonight, if we have any overachieving in the class, you're, the rest of the budget's in the spreadsheet, and you feel free to read ahead and, and get prepared. So, everything that we're gonna be proposing is before you. You have it. We're just gonna handle a section at a time.
Do we have spreadsheet? I only see two PDF documents in here.
Yeah, click.
No, just spreadsheet.
Yeah, so if you click on it, on board docs.
Tabs are on the top.
On the bottom.
Yeah, they're on the bottom.
Might have been what got mailed out.
They got emailed out.
Oh, got emailed out, okay. I was looking, I wasn't board docs, I'm sorry.
Well, board docs is just a PDF.
Right, yeah, okay.
I'm sorry, I, we did both. We didn't, I like to send a spreadsheet, because you can read my notes on a spreadsheet. And everything's there, so if you don't have it, just send me a note. I'll send it out to you again.
Okay.
Okay.
Because the other spreadsheets, I want you to, we, our goal with the beach, what we're changing with the beach. Also, you know, I need to make sure you, you know, our water conservation plan, you know, you gotta make sure you know, you know what's going on there. And then the, the new, I forgot what.
New trash, ATM fees.
Yeah, so we have a lot of things that we're gonna go over next week. We're changing, we're changing a lot of stuff, so, all good, Joe, all good.
Yes.
I've got a couple of quick questions.
Yes.
So, on note number 53 for the annual flower bed maintenance, I assume this is a basically plant to town that we've traditionally done with, with a green street or wherever they were.
Yes, yes.
So, so Public Works is taking away the labor on this? Is that what's happening?
No.
No, I'm sorry, maybe I didn't write the note clear enough. The mayor, that used to be under the general community development section of the budget.
Oh.
Wanted that moved to the Public Works Department, because Donnie oversees.
I see, okay. So, it's changing the accounting, not the change of actually how we're executing.
Yes, I apologize, yes.
And also, the flower beds, at one time, we were, we had all, and I don't know the difference, I think they were annuals, and now we're, what are we, guys? We're like,
Perennial.
Perennials now, or two-thirds perennials now.
That looks really good, especially on the winter, when everything just die off, actually, with some plants there.
Yeah, that's a huge financial savings too, that we don't, we're not replacing everything every year. Now, we're only replacing 25% of it, and that's it, so.
Yeah, that was a good change. And I've got one other question on page eight of the spreadsheet.
Yeah.
Under general services. So, this is one, and this is only a thousand dollars, I don't really spend too much time on this, but the mosquito control, I know you've had that on there, it's been a thousand dollars long, but I've been on council. I wonder, are we actually, is this actually doing anything? Because just for me to get my house sprayed, my lawn sprayed, it's 800 hours a year.
Right.
So, I have to wonder, what are we actually, is this actually working or doing anything?
Yes, it, we, we ride on the county's mosquito control, and they charge us by population. That's why it's so reasonable.
I mean, that's really reasonable.
Yes, it is. I mean, Paul, I don't know how we would survive. I would look like, I don't know what I would look like if I didn't have it down here where I live.
Okay, I just, just one concern, like it's so cheap, like.
Maybe we should plant some citronella plants in the boardwalk.
Yeah, that's a thought.
They're annuals. No annuals, Mickey.
It's okay to have a few.
But they do it due a purpose, you know, they are.
Lavender would work well.
Is that an annual?
Uh, that's a perennial.
Thank you, Mickey. See?
We have lavender.
Oh, we do?
Lavender's good.
I think we have lavender.
I don't know.
I could be wrong.
We have rosemary.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think you got spiria, whatever it is, it's like a, looks.
Spiria.
Never mind, we're being recorded in public, so I won't comment on that.
I gotta be myself anyway, so.
I have one more quick, quick comment. So, on page seven of the PDF, it shows the IT budget of like 51,000.
Yeah.
It's actually gonna be about 10,000 less than, I did not get my input in Joanne soon enough, so I apologize for that. We're going into basically, we've basically fixed everything on the IT side. Now, we're going into more of a maintenance mode. Now we're going into more of a maintenance mode. So we're going to see the, the actual cost of that started to decrease, which is nice. So it's going to be about 10,000 or less than what you're seeing.
But, but, but.
Until the mayor gives me more stuff to do.
We need, we, we need, and we're going to do this, fix our camera situation. So the camera situation has to be fixed. We, we're like in 1970s with our camera, so we're going to fix that. And that's Paul's job, so don't take the money away from us yet.
So I, I have, there's still some money left in the budget from this year. That's what I intend on using for that, unless Joanne has already taken it from me.
I have to look at it.
Spend it before you.
You're scaring me. I never heard all mid-budget say he's going to spend something like that.
I'll, I'll talk to Joanne offline about that, but either way, that, that's not a significant cost.
I know, I know.
That's all I have, thank you.
It was, we need to put the camera back up down on Fourth and Greenwood.
Okay.
I know.
I know, well, it's not that we do, I mean, yes, but we know who it is.
Yeah. I'm excited to see y'all next week.
Please get all your, I have some things I'm going to submit also with you. So please, let's get everything, let's get everything submitted to Joe over the next couple of days. This way she can, she can work her magic and, and show us what it would impact and how it would impact. And then we can have our conversations next week. Joe and I have gone over this information many, many, many times already and we know there's some, you know, we can continue to adjust, so please get the information to us.
Thanks for all the notes, Joanne, those are really helpful.
You're welcome, I try.
Second that. I love the, love the notes.
It's all about the notes.
Does anybody have any questions for tonight?
Wait a minute, I had something here.
Sorry, meeting adjourned, I'm teasing, Jane.
No, it's okay, I, I'll ask offline.
You sure? I'm teasing, you can ask.
No, I'm not going to ask just because you said that.
Whatever, just take over the IT. Any other questions before we? And don't forget, we have our, also pay attention to the board docs. We have something coming in from DB in the flood committee for next Thursday. If you have any questions about it, DB is available seven days a week, 24 hours a day to talk about it.
Pretty much.
Uh, but seriously, look at your board docs, make sure you stay on top of it. It is nothing major at all and you should not deem a lot of a conversation, but we do need a vote on it next week. And it's something really simple and really ridiculous, truthfully, but we have to do it, so.
I do have a question.
All right, what's your question?
55, note 55? Do you want to talk about that another time?
Hold on. What is 55?
Treatment cost slash operate maintenance, where is that? To what?
That's all a upcoming discussion.
Under sewer and water?
Yeah.
Yes, coming up, that's not tonight.
You're reading ahead.
Well, it's on my thing and.
Low now.
Slow your roll.
Listen, I'm doing budgets here and I'm doing budgets with my medical board, so you know, I got it.
All right, does anybody have any other questions for Joanne other than Joe? If you need us, we're here for you.
All right, thank you, I appreciate that.
Any other questions? If not, can I have a, a motion to adjourn? All in favor, raise your hand.
All right.
So move, thank you, God bless you, have a great night, guys.
Good night, everybody.
Mike and Gwen, can you hang out for a second? Can we chat real quick?
Yes.